Good evening. Before we start tonight, I just want to say that Dan Bowles and Jason Nephew along with Mike Schuster are excused from this evening. We have a few people on the moment of silence this evening. Thomas Hutt, a retired employee of the North Syracuse Central School District. Jacqueline Olmstead, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Jean Settinari, a retired employee of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. We have three presentations this evening. The first one on our list is Gillette Road Middle School's BPT presentation. Chris?
Jennifer Pavelski. I am.
I'm Lisa Mezzo. I'm a fifth grade ELA social studies teacher.
Trying to share some good news about Dr. Romanos. Trying to have this time to speak with you. Department of Education. It's a privilege for us to be here. It's kind of nice to make your point to share some of the things we've accomplished up to the. Dr. Romanos, go to Glads. We haven't changed a whole lot. Our student body is about 1,130. We have about 82 students from Glads. Despite the change. I think what's wonderful about our building is it's extremely stable. We have a really strong curriculum that challenges. I like to work with each other, also to learn from some of the teachers that we teach.
So as you know, the Gillette Road Middle School BPT is the primary decision-making body. Our BPT right now consists of classroom and special education teachers, school librarian, school counselor, and teaching assistants, along with building administration. So when we set out to make our goals for the 2017-2018 school year, we looked at data closely, and that consisted of parent surveys, student surveys, and decided on these areas for the biggest need for improvement as we move forward.
Own vision and mission statements. Good opportunity given that we have Vision 2020. We want these to be mission and visions because it's we have to make difficult. They're robust and they're going. I was like. Parent of the special arts unit can reflect what you. Give you confidence that this school is going to. Heard this came from. Thank their instruction without patience, and we will continue. Vision is there to serve as a. Those areas that we're focusing on mostly, as John alluded to, was culture and climate, was our instruction, was building a team. All of our students.
Okay, I'm going to be speaking to Goals one and, or excuse me, Goals two and three. Starting with Goal two, this is strengthen instruction with focus on inclusive education. At Gillette Road, we are all, all the staff members are working collaboratively to maintain an inclusive special ed model. All staff members have or will be participating in the Co-teaching Institute in Austin, of which had the opportunity to participate in that and have found it very beneficial to work alongside my special ed teacher in learning different strategies to use in Goal three is to cultivate partnerships with Gillette Road Middle School across the North Syracuse Central School District and with the larger community. This is where I'm just going to highlight a couple of things that we're doing within our school. We are currently setting up a Read-a-thon that will celebrate literacy in early March. This is a building-wide project that we're going to be doing. Within the district, some of the fifth and sixth grade teachers teaching ELA will or are participating in what's called a lab classroom study or residency where we work alongside the ELA helping teachers within the district to help set up and implement workshop models in the ELA classrooms effectively. And within the community, a lot of our clubs, our student clubs, are helping support different organizations such as Meals on Wheels, Rescue Mission, Salvation Army, and Hurricane Relief. We have a lot of different things that we are doing within our school, our district, and within our community.
And our fourth goal of engaging staff and community, improving culture and climate, really comes out of our commitment as a faculty to create a healthy and safe learning environment. One of the areas that we are trying to be very proactive is in creating a positive environment where students feel safe and teaching them how to deal with bullying, but being proactive and trying to prevent it, not just being reactive. So a couple of assemblies that we have that are coming up in January, actually this Friday on the half-day, there will be an assembly for all students on cyberbullying, internet safety, and digital citizenship. And in March, we will have another assembly on the half-day in March where we're really focusing on choices. So presenting an assembly to the students about how the choices they make can impact other people as well as themselves and the consequences or benefits to certain choices. That'll be in March. And this really comes from, again, the need for our commitment to be proactive in trying to deter negative behaviors and create that positive culture and environment.
First word is wow. Fries on students, not just. Also do like March 1st. We're going to be having. And they're going to have a short presentation beginning of. Our BPT and again, it's. A really high functioning. Let's do this very quickly. Description slide by slide of a lot. Anyone have any questions?
Of all, great job, great presentation. I was just wondering, how are your BPT members selected? I mean, is it the same core group of people every year or is it?
We don't actually hold elections. We don't. How is the most important factor for us? Hear what we're doing. For example, when we are. Actually, we have Vision 2020. So we're starting to move in that direction. Based on what we believe.
And I was just wondering, how are the students adjusting to the inclusive classrooms?
Which were two different groups.
Yeah, I do. You know, currently, I think at this point in time, the kids are getting more used to it because it's been in place for a couple of years now. And I think it's just a natural, a natural. Very comfortable. I think teachers are starting to feel more comfortable as well. We have a lot of support around the district that's very helpful. Like I said, with the residency that I'm actually currently doing that right now. And clarity, that's very helpful for those ELA helping teachers. Model what the workshop model should look like, and then they kind of sit back and they do like a gradual release where we take part in some of the lesson and then they give us feedback. And then by the end of it, we take over the whole. They're there to observe us and give feedback on that. So I think it's really been an adjustment for everyone, but I think everyone's really doing really well with it.
Great. And then also the assembly for bullying, I think. At this age especially, I just know from my own experience. When I was in middle school and having two boys that have come through school this age, you definitely teach them the right behaviors, model the right behaviors. Are there things that are being shared with? Something has to be continuously done.
Everyone who's wondering. Thank you guys. All right, next up, we have Roxborough.
Good evening, everyone. Today, we're going to do our best.
I'm associate principal.
Michelle Gardner, I'm seventh grade special education teacher and teacher.
Roxborough has three areas of focus that we've been working on this year. First, perhaps around data systems.
First area of focus has been creating sustainable data systems, and that really started last year. We were one of the finalists for an RTI grant at the New York State RTI Center at Buffalo, University of Buffalo. And the group of us went to the conference, and it really laid the foundational work for what is RTI response to intervention? What are the core integral pieces that we need for that? And as well as moving forward, looking at multi-tier systems of support, which also not only just includes the educational piece, but also behavioral tiers of support as well.
Other piece of the work we've been doing. Knowing where they're at and getting along. Tech team's also been working on. Rules and tools are pretty useful. Tools are tools. Is that where does I S?
In particular, it has. Intervention, how we've been with specific. Taking the win. Process of adapting towards the local. Seventh grade is just now starting the process. And what it means to support them. This right here is an example of the data wall, and this is actually seven students that have been pulled out and their actual scores. So we have the student name, and then the RI is our screener for reading, our reading screener. So we have it for fall and then winter, and then we'll have a spring score. MI is the math, so the math fall, math winter, math spring score. The colors are, the numbers are color-coded. If you look at under the RI score, all of those in the RI for fall are proficient, they're in reading. As you can see, we had the super bright green is above grade level. So we know, we can track those kids and see the progress that they've made. What's really, really interesting and exciting about the data wall is you can now shift over, and these are the same students' MI scores, or their math scores. So we have kids who are proficient in reading, who are also making gains in reading, the majority of them, some of them went down. You can look over and see that we have some kids in the red. So that is, those are our kids that we really want to hit with some really hard targeted interventions. They need a lot of support there. Some of them have increased with just their regular tier one or their classroom instruction. They've made progress. Some have made some gradual progress. So this starts this conversation of, we have some pretty typical seventh grade readers here, look at their math scores, what's going on there. So you can have some really targeted discussions about instructions and specifically, what does each individual student need? Another nice thing about all of our data walls, fifth, sixth, and seventh are electronic. So they're easy to share with all, with all classroom teachers, special area teachers, which is huge. If you're a PE teacher and you're giving a PE test that's, that's written, and you're wondering, wow, they, they seem to know the content, but they're really struggling with the test, you can look at them and say, oh, fine, maybe they're struggling with, with some reading. It's the reading, not actual access to the PE curriculum. So it's really important data that we're using to base our instruction off of our RTI and classroom instruction, getting all those tiers.
Add a trend. Last year, we had our local assistance plan, our LAAP plan, target for ourselves, the upfront of 2016. Very happy with that. But being in green on. Year, we have the same 10% growth. Even similar to last year. 10% growth in the. Year, it's a different test. This year, we had the same 10% growth. Even similar to last year. 10% growth in the. Year, it's a different test. This year, we had the same 10% growth. At your point, we're in a trend.
Seven seventy and a six thirty. The difference in those numbers.
Look at the growth percentage rates. We're growing at the same rate, and the test itself changed and. Much lower, so the growth. Has, it looks like God will. Growing at that same rate. Hope they want to make sure they're growing. Look at each grade level, we broke it down. Expect the fifth graders to grow more. Last year, they grew at 38%. Halfway point, they grew 50%. Yeah, yeah, the absolute value changed on us this year.
Dave, are you able to identify what changed and what they're struggling with?
From what I've heard from the math AIS, the whole test itself shifted. And so it's not a matter of whether they're struggling. Took a bounce up harder. Sure is that the students on the shadow won't be too excited. Red to the yellow. All of the numbers have shifted along with it, but a red also, what a red last year is not what a red. All of it shifted kind of down. At the halfway point of the year from where this started.
Our second area of focus has been on building. Grade in particular has. With an invitational touch. Locker night and open house and. Operating agreements. So Mary, when you mentioned, you know, teaching. That's what the fifth grade has. Our guidelines and expectations. Well, the fifth grade has been doing weekly lessons centered on these agreements and what it was. Examples of. Equally explicitly teaching. Have meetings taking the same. A PTO has.
Roxborough Campus Committee, which has yet to be named. Looking at. Big lots, but it's been part. Also very excited that we. Appreciate your support. Are measured in the LAAP plan before. Just our target, but I'm still very happy. It was not going well for you.
Sustainability was that third area of focus for us this year, and we kind of looked at the role of our BPT. And we decided we really were wanting to focus on data and system. So we created an action plan process for new events, old events, new things that we would like to try within the building. We created an action plan for that, which is just a nice way of creating actionable steps, who's responsible for it, and with some data, how do you know it's working, how do you not know it's working, what do you need to do to move forward? We also, we have the BPT and the data team work very close together. As the data team gets going and we start noticing trends in the data, the data team, BPT will look at that data and look at school-wide trends and then can make recommendations for professional development, so on and so forth, to, to support the data. We also have so many great activities at Rocks, the Rocks Trap, March Kindness, Pi Night, that's parent education. There's so many different things that we have, who kind of, we have different teachers step up and say, oh, I'll lead this or I'll lead that. The concern is what happens if that teacher is no longer there? So the BPT is overseeing, kind of overseeing those to make sure that there is sustainability and these great activities will have longevity.
Questions about why we're here and what. Us aligned with the Vision 20. And we're in the process of taking it further to.
Oxford Campus Committee, which has yet to be named. Looking at, uh. Big lots, but they're. Also very excited that. Appreciate your support. This morning. Are measured in the lap plan before. Just our target, but I'm still very happy. It was not going well for years.
Sustainability was that third area focus for us this year. And we kind of looked at the role of our BPT. And we decided we really were wanting to focus on data and systems. So we created an action plan process for new events, old events, new things that we would like to try within the building. We created an action plan for that, which is just a nice way of creating actionable steps, who's responsible for it. And with some data, how do you know it's working? How do you not know it's working? You need to do to move forward. We also, we have the BPT and the data team work very close together. As the data team gets going and we start noticing trends in the data, the data team. BPT will look at that data and look at schoolwide trends and then can make recommendations for professional development, so on and so forth, to, to support the data. We also have so many great activities at Rocks. The Rocks Trap March Kindness, Pi Night, that's parent education. There's so many different things that we have. Who kind of, we had different teachers step up and say, oh, I'll lead this or I'll lead that. The concern is what happens if that teacher is no longer there? So the BPT is overseeing, kind of overseeing those to make sure that there is sustainability and these great activities will have longevity.
Process of. Questions about why we're here and what. Us aligned with the vision twenty. Conversations within. And we're in the process of taking it further to. All of our social studies. About the vision twenty twenty. Had conversations with their students about. Why are we here? Survey. Questions and so we can. Read what they have to say about why they come to school, what their needs are from us. That into our mission. Really taking our time with it. Um, we find that we're evolving in all of this work and we're really. Be together in all of this work as we learn together. So that we can use.
As we evolve, we want to be. That's where not in our lap plan. Math scores are an eight percent decrease.
Yeah, I'm the, the RTI and the wind time and in the way you ended with the master schedule. Can you give me an idea, what, what does it look like now? You mentioned sixth grade was studying and implementing your. Seventh grade, then I look at this comment about the master schedule, so I just wondered where you. Where do you have this time in sixth and in seventh? I assume when you say when, you're breaking them into different small. Taking those, is it by grade level? Only grade level people are you bringing in like?
All hands on deck, anyone who's available.
Yeah. Went to Mike Maddow.
I've heard a lot about him.
Oh, he's, that's his quote, okay.
Recording by accident, but absolutely, the intent is to try to reduce that. Hide some tier two services at wind time. Discussion about whether AI. Tier three, is that a tier two? Question about scheduling more. Hidden sixth grades in the elementary sketch. As long as we can. Very hard this summer, we should be doing our schedule to make sure that. Study all the same. We were able to pull it off through the end. And those kids can mix, take a couple. It has a team of six and a team of seven.
I assume we're gonna be pulling some of the same. Well, good luck though.
Could I add on what we think also? Part of what we're studying. I was just able to go to an RTI institute. Act from it this week. Part of it is the study of. Adjusting establishment phase. With a lot of my school's learning. RTI in the summer. On the same thing that this. Scheduling is a big piece of it. Um, and. How we look at. Around all the areas to look in. Part of the process. When we started with the sixth grade, that was a piece.
First of all, I just want to say, great job on your presentation. And I especially like to hear what you're doing to teach the kids about why they go to school. Painting the big. Them and not just because I said so. It's so important. Well, that's what our parents told us. So, thank you so much. I just had a question about the, the lap. Like what's next? Like what, is this more a question for Donna Marie or? What happens? You just x test scores or?
I'd just like to make a comment and I think, you know, when you talk about the lap plan and yes, all of that is based on state testing. And I think the fact that you're looking at your own internal data is actually much more meaningful than the state testing because of the opt outs and other reasons as well. But I'm almost wondering if the lap plan that you were forced to do didn't face, didn't force your building to come together and really put some meaningful plans together in terms of how to move forward. Your presentation tonight was leaps and bounds above what it was two years ago. You, you, your building really needs to pat themselves on the back, your, all of your staff in terms of what you've been able to accomplish in two years and your presentation in your data showed it tonight, so.
It was so important for the kids.
Thanks guys, thank you. All right, next we have Don to update us on our favorite topic, the budget for this year.
Good evening. As you all are probably aware, the governor last Tuesday gave his budget presentation, his budget proposal. And that's the first item on our agenda. We're going to talk about his proposal. And then we have been able to collect enough information to calculate our preliminary tax cap and we'll share that as well. And as is customary this time of year, we start to look toward the end of the year and ask ourselves, where will our fund balance and reserves be at the end of the year? So without further ado, the governor's budget proposal provides about a three percent increase to school aid across the state. About half of it is an increase in the funding of foundation aid. Unfortunately, it's significantly less than the deficit or the amount of foundation aid that the state is not paying today. And I'll get more into that in a moment. One of the, once again, the major focus of the governor's budget proposal is to increase funding for high needs school districts. And to, to be clear, technically, what that means is those districts with a fifty percent or higher free and reduced meal rate. And our free and reduced rate is approximately thirty six and a half percent. So we are not considered a high needs district, although there are times when and areas where we, we do feel like our needs are, are greater than, than the funding that's being provided to us. Specifically for North Syracuse, our foundation aid is going to go up about $761,000. That's the, the big increase in our, in our budget. The, if you look at total with aid without building aid, we're going to have an increase of about $822,000 or about 1.34%. That's, you know, that's a modest increase when you think about the fact that we have contractual salary increases that we'll be providing our employees that are about three percent of wages. Our, our teachers' retirement alone is going up from about nine point eight percent to about eleven percent of payroll. That's about a $700,000 increase. So this is, if I move to my summary slide here. This governor's proposal is, is very disappointing, given the fact there were eight million dollars underfunded this year in our foundation aid. To only get a $761,000 increase is really disappointing. I haven't talked, on the previous slide, you saw that we had a, a, a building aid reduction. And, and I, I want to be, let the, the board know that our building aid reduction relates mostly to just paying off old debt. As you know, we have many capital projects that we've worked on over the years and that reduction just relates to the fact that some older debt is being paid off. And commensurate with that, our, our, we'll have less debt service payments we have to make and we'll get less building aid. So our focus at this time is really on that funding without building aid or the aid, the, the state aid without the building aid considered. And that's really the, the aid that funds our educational programs. We are working with our legislators to, to finalize our building aid for seventeen and seventeen eighteen and eighteen nineteen because we do have some administrative issues that we're trying to resolve. But overall, we are, are disappointed with the aid increase and we'll, again, work with our legislators and we'll have a better sense of where we stand on February twentieth, twenty sixth, when we come back and present our initial budget to the board. This slide, if it looks familiar, it's the same slide I've showed at every presentation when we talk about foundation aid. This really is the Achilles heel of our aid situation. Foundation, foundation aid is the most significant aid that we receive. We're grossly underfunded. As you can see, the last number on the slide is this year's funding at eight, almost eight point three million dollars lower than we're supposed to be getting. And, and it looks like with the $761,000 increase that we're getting, we'll still be in the ballpark of eight million dollars underfunded. And that needs to be our focus in terms of working with our legislature to get them to fully fund foundation aid. The good news is, last year's proposal that the governor had, he was proposing changing formulas and moving away from foundation aid. And none of that has been mentioned this year. So the buzz is that we'll eventually get fully funded, it just may take many years. So we'll have to, we'll have to see how that all works out. The tax cap. So the numbers that we've been waiting for, primarily, as everybody knows, it's the two percent tax cap. Our, our increase is either two percent or inflation, whichever is less. Well, that's the center number, they're called the allowable levy growth factor. And inflation was just, was higher than two percent, just slightly. And so our allowable levy growth factor is going to be two percent. And that's why we're using the factor of 1.02, that represents two percent. The other factor that's worth talking about is, is that tax base growth factor. And, and all of us are aware, we, we see all the development going on in our, in our district, housing and, and, and whatnot in the northern part of our district. And what the state does is they publish tax base growth factors. And they, they, they acknowledge that if your tax base is growing and that if you're, there's the potential for additional demands on the district, that they allow you to grow your levy based on that. And so our tax base growth factor is 1.01. So those are the two big drivers. As you can see, if you notice, the tax levy for capital for seventeen eighteen, that was two point six, almost two point seven million dollars in seventeen eighteen. And that's dropping down to 2.1 million dollars. That's the local share of our capital projects. And so that's dropping and therefore, as I mentioned in earlier slides, the aid is dropping. We're also seeing a decline in our pilots. The number of payment in lieu of tax agreements that are outstanding is down to about $219,000. So our tax levy, levy limit increase is about 2.3 million dollars or 2.72%. And that represents about $65 before star on a hundred thousand dollar home. So fund, fund balance, projected fund balance. Well, at the end of last year, our audit reported that we had about $6.3 million in unassigned fund balance. That's our savings. What we look at is where our revenues and expenditures are going to be for this year, the seventeen eighteen school year. And, and honestly, it's too early to tell where we're going to land. And so I need to, I need to just put a TBD there until we have more information. But I want to remind the board, we appropriated 2.7 million dollars last year to support the budget. So the only way you can get rid of that appropriation is to have an additional 2.7 million dollars of revenue. And since the governor's budget proposal only gives us a little over 800,000, it seems logical to me that if we're going to maintain spending at our current levels, we'll need to appropriate another 2.7 going into the eighteen nineteen school year. So I'm projecting that our unassigned fund balance will probably be about 3.6 million dollars as of June of eighteen, which represents about 2.29% of our seventeen eighteen budget. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah. Well, one of the things we're working on is putting our spending plan together and we're going to come to, come to you with that on the, on the 27th of February. If you take the total of the, the tax levy increase and the state aid, you've got a little over $3 million of increased revenue. I'm guessing that our expenses will be increased by about that amount. So the only way you, you could get rid of this 2.7 is to have our revenues increased by 2.7 million more than our expenses. So we'll have to, we're still working on it, but I think it's a safe bet that we're going to need a decent appropriation going into the eighteen nineteen school year. In terms of reserves, I'm, I'm kind, I'm happy to report that we've worked hard to take a good hard look at each of these reserves and make sure that the district is appropriately reserved for any potential liabilities in these areas. And I still feel confident that we're in good shape. The only change from June of seventeen to June of eighteen is going to be small amount of interest income that the district will earn on these funds. So no change in, in reserves. So as I, as I mentioned, our next big milestone is to look at the initial budget. And so if I can, just to take a minute to give you a picture, there's a lot of activity going on behind the scenes. Our principals and directors are working on their building level and department level budgets. We are working with our HR department to incorporate into all of our payroll, the salary increases that have been negotiated in the contracts. And we're pretty much complete with that process. We've, we've solicited information on our health benefits and on our pension costs. And we're pulling together costs on energy and fuel and, and a variety of things like that, the bigger items in our budget. So that when we come to you on the 26th, we'll be in a position to talk, you know, specifically about our expenditures. We're going to meet in early February with principals to talk about their staffing levels and enrollment and class sizes and whatnot. And all of that will be baked into that budget on the 26th. And we'll have a lot of work to do between the 26th of, of February and April 2nd, when we'll ask the board to adopt the budget. So it'll be a busy, a busy month ahead. Any questions or comments?
I just have a comment. I'm just a little worried about the fund balance going to. But we've had it lower, correct?
Yeah, and for, when I, when I, when I got here, we were under two percent. I too am worried about that, but I think we, it's early, we need to see how this year ends up. We'll see where those TBDs, where our revenues and expenses actually end up, because they will affect our fund balance. But yes, 2.29 is, is a low fund balance when the state recommends that you have four percent.
What's the negative impact of that? Does it affect our borrowing power or?
That's a great question. We have been through reviews by the rating agencies and I, I feel reasonably confident that we'll be able to maintain our credit rating at, at this level. But not, but I don't think we will if we get much lower, so that, that's something we need to keep an eye on. And that affects the cost of our borrowing, our interest rate. Better our bond rating, the better, the lower our interest rate is. Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Moving on to comments from the audience, we have one tonight. Randy and Don Matthews. Speak on policy 5140. Just want to remind you of the three minutes.
I would like to address the possible changes brought on by policy 5140 school admissions that you are considering. If this policy is approved, it will affect many children across the district in many ways. The adverse effects will devastate children's social, emotional growth and development. Let me show how this decision will affect our children in just one case and will be the result of approving this policy. My children, Ethan and Gianna, attend schools outside of our elementary and middle school zones. This happens because they have attended the same babysitter since both were born and were three months old. Ethan now attends Roxboro Road Middle School, where he'd be allowed to continue through seventh grade and head on to junior high, where he's excelling and having a wonderful time. Gianna currently attends Allen Road Elementary School. But we forced to attend Gillette to find a new baby, but we forced to attend Gillette and find a new babysitter, all while Ethan continues to attend Roxboro and the same babysitter. Gianna will be removed from her brother, her babysitter, her friends and her community. Her activities are North Syracuse-based because that's the community she calls home. Her little league is North Syracuse. She's required to leave her friends and teams because she's no longer attending a school in their zone and will have to move to a completely new little league. Her soccer team is North Syracuse-based. Her friends are in North Syracuse and we have to spend our time driving her around to North Syracuse to play the eighth and attend birthday parties. She has been with this cohort of children since preschool. Her best friends are her school friends from Allen Road and the kids from her teams in North Syracuse. She will no longer be allowed to attend her babysitter, whom she has known as a second mother since her birth, while her brother gets to stay there. That means drafting the children off at two different sitters every morning and forcing our children to be separated and forcing us to spend extra now to pay for two different babysitters. This will be very difficult to explain to my daughter why her brother can continue his life unaffected with his babysitter, who is like family, while she will be uprooted and required to start a new life without her second mother and without her brother. They always talk about going to school together again at the middle school level since he left Allen Road. They will not have the opportunity if this happens. Fifth grade is a huge transition for students and I have listed a multitude of negative impacts that will be inflicted upon my daughter. And my other question is, how will this decision affect her academics? We have not middle school shopped or attempted to take advantage of the system. We have in fact helped the district by sending our children to underpopulated schools as opposed to the much higher populated Lake Shore and Gillette. We chose our babysitter before her son was born. It's a very difficult thing to do as we're trusting someone else with our baby's care. She was not chosen because of the school that she was owned for. Our belief has always been that the North Syracuse School Board does, North Syracuse School Board does what is right by the children and the community. This policy has many unintended consequences. We ask that you consider special circumstances that are in the best interest of the child or the phase in the policy with the incoming kindergarteners. We also ask that you table the vote, explore both the amount of children who will be affected within communities, their comfort zones, their friends. Also, to allow for community input on a decision that will directly impact children. Please consider the social, emotional growth impact and how your votes will affect the students during your biggest developmental transition to middle school. We ask that you consider how this will affect the children within the North Syracuse community.
Moving on to board committee reports.
The policy committee met on January 16th. I just want to commend, the committee did a fantastic job. We had a huge agenda because we hadn't met in a while and we got through 18 policies and they're on to mixture of just re-adoption.
I wasn't at the last meeting here, but we did have a legislative committee meeting January 3rd, I think, or 2nd. Right away in the beginning of January. And we had a robust discussion with Regent Elizabeth Hackenson in regards to the regent's role in recommending school funding. And the committee will meet again, or is scheduled to meet again on February 3rd.
On policies, meeting again on February 12th.
Before I pass it up, I just want to say I had a chance to go to the junior high school play of Damn Yankees last Friday. It was a week late because of the weather, but I just want to commend all the students and the staff.
I have a couple of good news things. If you've read any of the news reports, people would know that 35 Central New York students have advanced to the oral round of the spelling bee. And I would like to acknowledge some students from school district. From Gillette Road Middle School, Joseph DeGraut moves on, advancing to the next round. And then we have several students who attend North Syracuse Junior High School. Delia Fidelli, Charles French Jr., Jacob Garofalo and Gabriel Moravi. So, congratulations to them and we wish them well as they move on. So, as you can imagine, sometimes I get emails from people that aren't happy. Couple of emails that I got recently that really made me smile. So, this morning was one of them. I had an email from a gentleman named Kevin Cook. And he wanted me to know that on last Friday, that he had the pleasure of hosting the first art exhibit at the Barnes Hiscock Mansion on James Street in Syracuse with artwork that was supplied by North Syracuse Central School District student. They came up with the idea and reached out to every school district in Anadaga County. And the only one that responded was our art teacher, Kara Cook. No relation to this gentleman, Mr. Cook, he points out. But due to Kara Cook and our students, he said the response was overwhelming and far better than they had hoped. Great comments about the students' artwork. And this was a fundraiser for their organization. And because of Kara and our students, they raised $800 through donation. So, people that were there are hoping that this will become an annual event. So, I just wanted to point out that, once again, we're working in partnerships with the community in ways that we had never thought of before. So, thanks to Kara for doing that. And then, I often comment on our sports teams. And I do try to attend a lot of the events and some of us were at a real nail-biter with the boys' basketball team Friday night. But I received an email that was unusual a couple of weeks ago. Our hockey team, who's doing quite well, but I don't think they had had a good, good game this particular night, they played at a rink that they normally don't play at. And Mr. Benarski and I received an email from the director of that rink commenting on the fact that our, our hockey team left that locker room immaculate. It was so clean that he took the time to send us an email and say that we have really good students with great character. And it was noticeable and he wanted us to know that. So, those are the things that are really important.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to routine action items. Do I have a motion to take A, B, C, D and E? All in favor? Discussion action items. A, a resolution authorizing into up to a 48-month service contract with BOCES for communication devices. Procedure right down. Do I have a motion for that? Aaron, Mike? We do have a gift this evening. The CNS football. Oh, the date changed, thank you. B, the date change of the March 19th board meeting. We are moving this from March 19th to March 26th. Paul and Mary? Okay, the gift, we do have a gift. The CNS football booster club has donated to the district 75 football helmets valued at $17,700. Thank them very much for that gift. Do I have a motion to accept with gratitude the gift? George, Patrick, all in favor? I will make a motion to accept policies listed in D, E, F, G, H, I, J and K as a group. As Mary mentioned, the majority of these are readoptions with a few that are amend and re-adopt. Take these policies as a group. Make the motion, but I want to second. Aaron, all in favor? I would like to take note of a couple of retirements this evening. We have Roger Kronk, a custodial worker at CNS, is retiring with 27 years of service. Reba Schultz is a custodial worker at Gillette Road Middle School, who is retiring with 34 years of service. And Tom Van Beveren, a custodial worker, retires with 16 years of service. So, we thank them for all of their time and wish them well in their retirement. For personnel items, do we need an executive session before we take items A and B? Do I have a motion to accept personnel A and B as a group? Mike, Leon, Mary, all in favor? All right, I would like to make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of reviewing an update on one legal matter relative to potential litigation and to review the employment history of four individuals with no action to follow. Do I have a second? Aaron, all in favor? If there are any students here that need our signature, we welcome you to come up.